Good afternoon. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Hartford Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, and start with a roll call.
Markie Paula?
Here.
Lori Katsons? Trita McIntyre? Robert Martin? Leo Sastner? Lisa Cepeda? Richard Villalobos? Mr. Colin Rivas?
Here.
Here.
As I mentioned the last time, the rules of order and terms of engagement for this meeting are now in full view in a poster in the back of the room. So instead of reading that to you every time, I'm just going to say, "Welcome," and thank you for being here, and we look forward to everyone's participation. Let's start with the dialogue session tonight, and the first speaker is Tiana Hercules. How's your name on it?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Bushimoto. I'm only here representing my capacity as a parent in two major concerns that I have with respect to, as you know, the MLK relocation of West Middle School. I understand and I do appreciate the feedbacks that I've received recently from yourself, as well as Dr. Slater, and the proactive approach that has been taken with respect to remitting the conditions of MLK when West Middle gets there. But I guess my concern is the conditions right now of the school and the fact that there are kids currently going to school in those present conditions. And so while I do understand and appreciate that many things will be fixed by the time West Middle gets there, I do wonder if in the short term, we can expect any remediation with respect to the issues that are presently there. The conditions are such that I do not understand as a parent how we can expect our children to thrive academically in an environment that, as it is in its current state. So I wonder, and I guess if we can have some dialogue about possibly making some remediation in the short term before West Middle gets there, because there are students there presently, and the conditions are not good by any stretch of the imagination. My second concern has come to my attention that quite possibly, and Dr. Denau said that he will talk about this later with me, but that quite possibly, West Middle will not have pre-K next year, that those pre-K seats are going to empty fast. And I wonder, in an environment where nationally and locally, we are stressing the importance of early care and education, how we can be depleting pre-K spots for our children and expect to fill the third grade promise when we have less seats available for four-year-olds. So I just would like some clarification if possible, some further dialogue with parents if that is going to happen, and how that will negatively impact the asylum neighborhood if we don't have a pre-K for West Middle School. So those are my two major concerns, and I look forward to speaking further about that with you, I hope, and other parents as well.
Actually, I appreciate your coming to the board meeting and asking, I think, two very important questions. The MLK facility as a whole has been recognized by this board as needing renovation, as new work overall. And so that type and level of work is not going to, we're not going to be able to do, obviously, in preparation for both the current students and the temporary situation. But we are looking at a full-scale, we're doing a full-scale review of the facility to look at how we can improve this space. And we've been talking to the principal all year round, the things that he suggests that the building needs as well for current students. The spaces that we are doing some targeted work on are spaces that have been closed off and are not used because the building is not fully used. So to reopen those spaces, we're doing a whole clean out. We're looking at making sure that the bathrooms that are not currently being used are also up to speed in terms of being able to be fully utilized. And so we're doing both the cleanup of spaces that have been shut down because of the lower enrollment in that school, but also the spaces that are currently used by MLK students. In terms of the pre-K students, we're going to have a combined pre-K set of classrooms in the school. As long as we have the demand for the pre-K, then we'll have enough pre-K there for West Middle and MLK students. What we want to make sure of is, because we're in a temporary location, it's away from a walking distance from West Middle, that we have enough pre-K spaces in that general area. And so we'll be looking at distribution of those pre-K seats. But it's not that there won't be any seats for West Middle.
But West Middle will not have a pre-K?
It'll be a combined classroom of West Middle. There's no reason to separate from one school to the other when you're in the same facility.
So if I heard you correctly, with respect to the short-term issues that are present in the school, the areas that are closed off are going to be cleaned, but there's some areas that are being utilized, like in the cafeteria, there's mold that are being utilized. Now, there's bathrooms that are open that need to be commutated, so can we expect something done with those in the short term?
We are, mold is something that we would want to address right away. So we're looking, we're doing a, we already did a full walkthrough of the building, and I know Dr. Slater has been putting a proposal together for things that will be addressed, actually fairly quickly during, I believe it's during Brightwood's coming out, and then there may be some follow-up stuff that is done over the summer that can't be completed. So there is a full-scale review of the building.
Can parents expect to be communicative with respect to the timeline for different issues, like when things can be expected to be fixed?
Yeah, Dr. Slater is your main contact for that, and he's been organizing, as well as from the castle, a whole series of meetings. So we've had quite a few of them, and we'll continue to have those, in the transition of the school.
And when West Middle School goes back, will we have a pre-K at that point, when we go back to our location?
Yeah, there's, in the construction specs, great question, I know we are going on here a bit, these are questions you can take to Dr. Slater. The build-out of West Middle includes an early learnings area, and so there will be spaces in there for pre-K and first grade, I believe, it's always one area of the building. But those construction architectural designs will be shared as they get approved with the community, and there has been input, I believe, already. But that may be coming up in terms of the input on the architectural specs.
Thank you.
You can hear.
Can I say a word?
Is it a public comment or?
I just want to comment that I spent my first years working at the Martin Luther King School, and less than a month ago, I was there visiting. The terrazzo floors that they had cannot be replicated in any of our buildings, they are fantastic. And I admit that there are rooms that are empty and may be there, but I went on a tour with the principal and the classrooms and what was going on in the classrooms. I had no complaints at all, and I just, I don't think it's fair to the population, the community that's there, and I live in that community, to have this group feel that this building is in terrible, terrible shape. Obviously, it's got empty spaces, and you know, an empty space that becomes a storage space is not, is not going to be an attractive place, and that obviously has to be taken care of. But I saw good teaching going on, enthusiastic students, and I certainly did not see problems with, the trash in the front, every day, I'd go down the street, you know, somebody's got to go down and pick it up, but that happens. So I just, I don't want this whole audience to go away feeling that what a terrible place Martin Luther King is, because it is not a terrible place, it's a very strong structural building, and I'm not saying it doesn't need some help, but I just.
We're going to need to move on to do everything we need to do. We do have to limit the comment period to three minutes, and further discussion is certainly available with the district and the administration, but for tonight, I think we have to, we have to move on.
But thank you.
Thank you very much. Hyacinth Denny?
Good evening, everyone. Hyacinth Denny, I'm an advocate and community leader and everything else. I'm here because I have a couple of things that I just need to say, and I'll try to be quick as possible. Hartford High, we still need to have a timeline and when we're going to talk about changing the time when kids go to school and, you know, when they leave school, because, you know, I know teachers have to, or principals have to do planning around scheduling and stuff like that, and I, this is March here, and we need to know something pretty soon. And I don't understand why is it that we have to wait for some principal to say, "No, we don't want that time anymore." Why can't you, as a superintendent, say, "All our high schools are going to start at 7:50 and get out at 2:15?" That's the natural thing to do, and that's just one. The other thing is, I'm also seriously thinking and wondering, when is Hartford Public School going to start looking at getting all our schools accredited? This is a lot of work. Somebody has to talk about it, because our schools are not accredited, and that weighs a lot on our children when they apply for colleges. Okay, so I just need to, you need to do that. And we need to look seriously at going back to community school. We don't need to build any more magnet school, because, yeah, yeah, the state will pay, but the point is, it's not about that. We need to make sure we're building schools for our children that lives in the city of Hartford, and stop worrying about, yeah, the state will pay it. We need to make sure we're building a school for our children that lives in Hartford, okay? And that's important. Community school is really the way to go, all right? We need to seriously look at that. It saves them on buses and all those kinds of stuff. Kids need to feel a sense of community in their, when they're living in their community. The other thing quickly I wanted to mention is that Dr. Jackson, somebody I know for like about 25 years, she has a sense of commitment to the Hartford Public School that I've known for 20-something years. My kids had her when they were going to school in elementary school or middle school. And I've known her as one of those persons that, you know, she wanted to be in Hartford. Hartford is the place where her heart is at, and putting her in charge of five elementary school is the best thing that you can do. She has great ideas how that school is going to be, but we need to focus on community, get our kids into those schools that lives in that community. So it's really important for us to start looking at that. You notice that New Britain's gone back to community school, because in some way, we feel like, realize that it's the best thing to do for our kids. You know, there's no beat-up and magnet school, but the point is, we need to make sure all our schools are quality schools, that everyone in the community wants to go to. So I just want you to think about those things, okay? But it's really important about the starting time at Hartford High, we need to know soon. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Shante Prode?
Hello, board members. Hello, student representative. I missed last meeting, so I didn't get a chance, I didn't realize that we have a student up here. First, I want to say, I don't know which day you went to MLK, Ms. Noel, but it is not, it's, those conditions are not okay that exist. Maybe they knew you were coming, and they did an extra cleaning, but, and I understand that the amount of custodians depends on the enrollment, so to maintain such a large space, they're at a disadvantage, but some of those conditions need to improve immediately for our children. I'm, first, I, second, I wanted to say that if parents could get a clear, like, when you guys know some schools are going to be turning magnet, I would like a heads-up way in advance, because not all parents want a magnet school. Some of us choose schools because they are not magnet. So the sooner parents can know that the school is going to possibly be transitioning to a magnet school, because if we're a district of choice, that should be part, we should weigh that in on our choice. If it's becoming magnet, maybe I don't want my child to be a magnet, maybe I want a community school. So with respect to parents, I think that's only fair. One thing I don't understand is, I remember when we voted, and it was some concerns, when we had Jamoki, the Jamoki Milner partnership, and the board voted, I think, that they weren't able to control the enrollment, and I'm thinking they wanted to do it to ensure the fidelity of what they were, that they're trying to accomplish here. But then I remember in the past, when we had, like, State For Instance Breakthrough Two, when they were not a magnet school, when schools were under redesign, we were allowed to, they capped enrollments because they only wanted this certain amount of kids and to grow the school. So I don't understand why we would do that for some schools, but not do it for all schools. So that, to me, is not fair, because if, if you can control yours to make sure you're successful, because you're controlling the classroom, if Jamoki Milner is not able to do that, are we hoping they fail? Are we rooting against them? So that's something I don't agree with, I don't like. So I don't know if it was noted, was that a certain, a special circumstance? But how could it be done for some redesigns and not all? Thank you.
Andrea Mesquita White?
Hello, good evening, board members, and also community. My name is Andrea Mesquita White, and I'm a parent of two Hartford children. I'm here with two concerns. Number one is the disparities I see with schools that are magnet and schools that are non-magnet. My son is in a magnet school. Beautiful campus, gorgeous. Parents, when you walk through the door, you're greeted like, okay, this is how a school is supposed to look. My daughter is in a non-magnet school, she's in a community school. Of the two children, my daughter is happier. When it comes to my daughter, I can go up to the school, I can, I can talk with the teacher. When I've talked with her teacher, it's a partnership. I can say, the first two weeks my child was in class, I was like, okay, let's give it that period and see, let her get ingratiating to the culture of the school, and then we can see where she is, where she is and where she wants to go. The teacher approached, my husband and I, "Oh, your daughter, she's excellent, she needs this, this, that." My son is a completely different matter. When it comes to the way students who are in community schools and magnet schools, the disparity runs the gamut. You were talking about from having or not having field trips to, say, not having books or not having a library. My daughter attends Hartville School, and I'm very keen on all the initiatives, I'm very keen on all the plans, and one of the things I look especially to is the third-grade I found it to be very hypocritical for the system overall to have such a promise. I think it was a great idea, a great concept, but my question was, how are you going to have something such as a third-grade promise where students should be able to read by then, and there is no library, there are no books? Granted, you, there's a library next door, and I'm not, my mom, my daughter came to say, "Mommy, I love my teacher, I love my class, but it's boring." I said, "Define boring, because what do you find boring?" Because I could sit her down, and she will do five sheets of math with, she will keep on going until I have to say, "Okay, Victoria, I think it's time for dinner now." So define boring. "Well, mommy, at my other school," which used to be a mag, which was a magnet school, "at my other school, I had field trips, at my other school, we had presentation." And so I'm a member of my school's SGA, SGC, so I went to the FRA. Why, what is, why are there no field trips? And then I get the ratio, it's all about ratio, it's all about funding. And I've done my homework. And what I'm saying as a parent, this system we have, I know it's as a result of Chef versus O'Neill. Their parents run the gamut in terms of how they're versed in Chef versus O'Neill and the aspect of it, but to see it and to live it is different. And so what I need this board to think about when they think about funding is, what are we doing to our kids when we put them in environments where we know are failing? What are we doing to our kids? When we put them in environments, I mean, where they don't have boats, where they don't have a library, where, such as MLK, where you have mold, where you don't have sufficient staffing. And on the second front, I know I heard the bell, I'll just be quick about it. A year ago, I went to a community forum in which Chief Hartford was the host, and one of the questions was asked, "Well, parents, we want your feedback. What do you think about parent engagement?" And one of my things was, "Well, when you say parent engagement and that you're opening the door for parents to voice their opinion, then guess what? You need to listen, not just a quick, let's get together, and you can say a few words, and we'll give you a meal." Parents need to be at the table. And when I say at the table, I don't mean, I mean where it comes to policy, I mean when it comes to deciding if our school's going to be turned into a magnet, what does it mean for our community, a child who lives across the street? I worked for three years as a community organizer with Acorn. Issues they had are the issues we still have today. I can live across the street from a magnet school, it's beautiful, it's wonderful, but my child can't go there. I have relatives who live in Avon, I have relatives and friends who live in Sinsbury, and what they say, "Oh, we have the best of both worlds. We can drive down from our beautiful hills, and we can, we have a choice." I, I remember when my, before my son was born, I went to all the schools, and, oh, great, wonderful, it was down the street from where I lived. My niece lives in Newington, she got her daughter in like that, and then she's like, so I'm happy for her, and I'm happy for all those who can, and I believe in diversity, but I believe in equal opportunity for Hartford. And you are not going to see new growth if you don't have incentivization for people to buy homes here, they're paying taxes, they're working, they have to drive outside of Hartford for the better jobs, and then you have individuals coming in. Yes, let's all have diversity, let's all have a community where everyone is involved, but let's stop disenfranchising students who live in Hartford. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Millie Arseneagis, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Or good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening over there. I have a couple of concerns tonight in regards to a couple of areas. I know I spoke before in regards to cultural diversity training. In April of 2012, I want to know where this is going, because you can't say something and then expect us to follow you and then have nothing. Can't do that. What was said in April 2012 is that all incoming teachers will have cultural diversity training so that they can have a better rapport with families. So the only way I'm able to even get that information is through FOI requests. And that's a shame, that we can't even call people from the district to say, "I need a copy of this training that was done." We get the runaround, you know, we get the, who's on first, what's on second, I don't know who's on third, and we can't continue to operate like that in this district. These are our kids, okay? Everyone gets paid because of our kids. So we need to start realizing that we're equal partners in this, okay? And we're going to hold people accountable. It's just the way it is. You can't be afraid of accountability. So this district, a couple of years ago, said, "We're going to leave the system of entitlement to a system of accountability." Well, it looks like this system of entitlement's coming back, so we need to reverse it. The other area that I want to talk about is the parent involvement policy. One of the biggest things about the parent involvement policy is that parents were about, are a part of it. So let's adhere to it. I went through that line by line, and every line, we're not in compliance. We're not. So who is monitoring that? Then we have an assistant superintendent of parent engagement that tells a group of parent engagement task force parents that he doesn't have time to teach us our parent rights. Who does that? It says it right there in the parent involvement policy. That is one of the first things you do. You give every parent the parent involvement policy. Every parent in the district should know that they have a parent involvement policy, okay? That's how you engage them. They should know that. So for him to say that, that is inappropriate. And yes, I am holding him accountable, because he doesn't need to say that. He just needs to do what is said in the policy. And this board creates policies so that this administration can make sure her staff follows it. And then the other, the other area is school governance councils. We're out of compliance. Let's start asking, how many parent members are in each of these school governance councils? It's pretty scary, because you know what? A year ago, a year and a half ago, we were doing really good, really good. Changes were made, and look where we're at now. I can't even get that through an FOI request. Okay? So good luck with that. Then, last thing I want to say, as far as these failing schools, we need to start thinking of maybe have vouchers for parents, so that they can send their kids to a private school or to a school that's not failing. Because it is, it is, it's such a hypocrisy for us to want to send our kids to a butterfly factory, okay? Merry hook. How many times are we going to tell parents, "You're going to pass by a butterfly factory, a school with waterfalls, and you're going to end up in a deplorable school." We got to stop that. And magnet, magnet schools are not the answer, they're not all the answer. We got to take action now on what we can do now for the kids that are existing in those schools now, not in 2016. We don't have time for 2016. So then I want to end up with one little note. I met the chief academic officer, outstanding. She knows about culture, she knows about putting culture in the, in the curriculum. She makes time for parents to really understand that. She's an awesome lady, and I want to thank her for putting, getting, you know, setting time aside for me to, for me to better understand that. But we need to do better when we ask a question about cultural diversity training as relates to teachers' rapport with parents and getting answers back from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Millie. Jane Russell, please.
Another Jane Russell. I'm going to, I have other recitals in La Escuela Pública Superior, Mokel High School. Estoy aquí en representación de EHPA, soy la tesorera. Hay muchas preocupaciones de los padres sobre el envolvemente de los padres en la poliza, y alguien necesita mirar qué es lo que está pasando inmediatamente. Creo que la poliza está ahí para seguirla. Hacemos buena parte.
Thank you. Bianca Narrein?
Good evening, my name is Bianca Pinky Narrein, and I'm a parent of a student who attends Moylan Montessori. And I'm here tonight to ask the board to support Moylan Montessori becoming a magnet school in Hartford. I have other parents here with me. I know we have three minutes, so I'm going to pass the mic to the next person who's on the list, who's Kimberly, and she's going to talk to them and then answer. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kim. I have a son in the Moylan Montessori program. I also have a daughter who goes to the regular Moylan Expeditionary Learning Academy, and I have to say that my son, who is three, has already bypassed the curriculum that my five-year-old is learning in a public school. I went to a magnet school in sixth grade, and I am in, I am a huge advocate of Montessori becoming a magnet. becoming a magnet school. I believe that for the excessive amount of children that are applying for the school and the increase of students who are going to be in it in the following years, I believe that for it to become a magnet school is the only way that these kids can continue the excellent education that they get through the Montessori program. And I know that we have a time limit, so I'm going to allow the rest of the parents to speak their mind as well.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Mendez, and I'm a parent of a Moylan Montessori child. This is his fourth year in school. What he has experienced and his learning, his confidence, it is outstanding. And I'm in full support of the Moylan Montessori program to become a magnet.
So in saying that, we're, we're here to show our support and ask that the board would approve this happening and us becoming a chef magnet Montessori school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrea Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Board members, superintendent, student, welcome. I'd like to speak this evening about the Milner School, which, as you know, is a Hartford school that has a management model used by Jamokey Academy. There's also a Connecticut Commissioners Network School. As a network school, a committee was formed per order of the state to meet and discuss and come to a resolution on how this network school would be established and operated. There have been difficulties from the inception, unfortunately, of this school. Now nearly seven months into the school year, the problems have become larger, and the chaos theory seems to be the engine that is running and moving this school along. From the start of the school year, when the Hartford teachers hired by Dr. Sharp without the Hartford Office of Talent Management present at the interviews, to the latest push by Dr. Sharp to request that his staff get involved in how the extent, how to extend the year, how it would work, has been one bizarre incident after the other. Going to give you a short history. In August 2012, failure of Dr. Sharp to include the OTM, having co-interviews for those who applied for jobs at Milner Turnaround School, a Hartford school. Teachers refused to agree to the items that Dr. Sharp had proposed and would be working as their working conditions. Superintendent Kishimoto sent me a reprimand letter that I did not work hard enough to get the teachers to agree to the information in this agreement. Next, the Hartford Federation of Teachers works with the teachers to create an MOU to protect our teachers who would otherwise have their collective bargaining rights violated. Then enormous confusion concerning the extended school year by Milner teachers. Again, an agreement is reached between the HBOE and the HFT to allow teachers who have not had knowledge of the extended day when they were hired, excuse me, extended year when they were hired, to be allowed to post out in the annual posting time if they are tenure teachers. Or if not tenure teachers, post for jobs that may be online. As the year progresses, many mixed messages are received. That would be the HOB policy and the FUSE, family urban school, schools of excellence that represent Jamokey Academy. Teachers will receive info that is Hartford policy and another interpretation that would be sent to FUSE and contradict HOB policy. In February, Dr. Sharp and FUSE decided that the Hartford-Milner School would have two days off for winter break, Thursday and Friday prior to President's Day. This was not in the Hartford school's calendar, apparently. This is the way Jamokey had their schedule set, so Dr. Sharp and apparently Dr. Kishimoto allowed the Hartford school to do the same. In early March, I was invited by the teachers to attend a staff meeting where informational concerns about the school year extensions were to be discussed. There were two options presented to the staff by Dr. Sharp. Option one was that the staff would work 25 additional days, which would also include Saturdays in the fall and spring. As I pointed out to Dr. Sharp, the additional 25 days were one piece of the original agreement of the Network Committee, and the autumn-spring Saturdays were yet another, so to combine them would not work. Finally, Dr. Sharp has met again with his staff and asked them to come up with a plan, which they must, they must be part of, on how good the year could be extended. Unfortunately, several staff members did attempt to do this. While they did, they took out the agreed-upon holidays from the Hartford Public School calendar. I requested a conversation with the superintendent, March 12th, but did not receive a call back. The HFT requested to meet with the Commissioner of Education and had a date for March 8th. However, Commissioner canceled that meeting, and we are still waiting for a new date. As a member of the Commissioners' Network Committee for Milner School, I and my fellow committee members worked hard this summer to follow the law and form a plan for Milner School. Unfortunately, this plan has gone astray and has been allowed to go astray. This outrageous allowance is, of course, a failure, is failing to follow the state law and the spirit of the document created this summer by the committee. When I meet with other union presidents from the three other districts within the state who are also have, who also have network schools, I am not only embarrassed by the lack of professional responsibility not being taken, but by the extreme, I am extremely even more so disturbed by the black eye that Hartford gets with the disconnect and the blatant failure to follow a plan that is to take place at Milner School. As I will say one more time, Milner School is a Hartford school. Not only must the staff be respected as Hartford teachers, but the original plan developed for Milner as a network school must be followed. Thank you.
I'd like to just make a quick comment to that. I think everyone's working hard on, on this, and we continue to try to organize the next meeting with the commissioner, and that's been ongoing. We're in the middle of the legislative session. There's a difficult meetings to coordinate now. He has assured me that he will be meeting with us and will have a full committee meeting. We need to keep working at this, and we have all been working at this. And the, I think what is important from my perspective is that as we hit bumps in the road, as we try to turn, do a major turnaround of our lowest performing school, not only in the city but in the state, that we continue to be willing to come to the table while us lead and do that work. We all have been doing that. That doesn't mean that things, I think, will be perfect, but certainly we will ensure that we have a great school for our kids.
So perhaps, Superintendent, we would start with the, pardon, with the meeting we were supposed to have somewhere in the middle of the school year, about January, to see where we were. It's now almost April, so that would probably be a very good place to start, and I agree with you.
That would be a great place to start.
We're all trying to work very hard to get this to work.
I'm trying to organize a meeting with everyone on the committee. My understanding is that the union requested a separate meeting with the commissioner, Jamokey requested a separate meeting. I requested that we do this all together at once so that we're not there separately.
So to clarify that, I would very much like to clarify that. When we requested the union, we asked, of course, that you would be there. We asked anybody involved in that meeting would be there. And I, I'm unders, I'm understanding that the commissioner understood that. So we certainly would not ask to have separate meetings if we are supposed to be working as one and as a committee that we were all appointed to, so.
I think we're all working hard at this, and we're all committed to this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Chase.
Good evening, board members. My name is Michelle Chase. I am a Hartford resident. I have two children that are out district to Bloomfield, one of them having special healthcare needs, being special education. I am here on behalf of the members of the Hartford, West Hartford Systems of Care to request that the Board of Education check into why we don't have a representative monthly at our table from the Board of Ed. And everything that's going on with the healthcare and our children, our special ed children and mental health, it is critical that there's a representative at that table to collaborate with all the systems of care. I know it was Winston Johnson, and he was attending the meeting regularly, but that ended last year, so I was wondering why and when can we know when someone will come back? Normally, our members, we request if they're voting members, that they come to at least nine out of 12 meetings a year, but it is a collaboration that is critical the Board of Education represents as well.
Thank you, Ms. Chase, for raising that. I believe you and I had touched base at another forum about this.
Yeah.
Is Claire Kennedy here?
Yes.
If, I don't know if you've spoken with Claire Kennedy. She's raising her hand in the back. She would be the person appointing someone to attend, so if Winston Johnson, for some reason, is not able to attend, she can coordinate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And that closes the public comment period. Thank you, everyone. But going to the report segment, the superintendent may mention this, but, but one thing I wanted to let you all know, particularly those of you who have been either following this or at previous meetings, the issue around the future of adult education and are we moving to a new facility and so on. The superintendent has made some decisions about not moving forward immediately on the kind of plan that we had originally, that there will be discussions with educational leaders in the area, the region, about adult education needs first. And, you know, what do we need? What do people need? What kind of resources do we need? And does Hartford have them to, to manage on its own? I think that's a, a, a good way to proceed, and we're beginning those meetings this month, and we'll have a recommendation at some point in the, in the future about how we're gonna handle our adult education needs here in the city. So that's an update on the, on that process, and we won't be moving imminently to Capital Community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, two items I want to report on this evening. One is, we have completed the, basically the standard or on-time administration, the CMT and CAPT exam across all grade levels and content areas. We are in a period of make-up exams for any student who may have missed a day of school or several days of school to make sure that we have 100% of our students complete all of the examinations related to their grade level. I wanna thank the teachers and staff who have coordinated this work. It is an undertaking to make sure we have a secure testing environment, that we collect all this materials, it's such a heavy process piece in addition to making sure that our students feel comfortable coming into school, are welcomed into school and are not kind of so anxious about this exam. It's really meant to just test them on where they are and to ensure that it's part of the curriculum. And it's an important part of our curriculum, but that's exactly what it is, part of our curriculum. So I wanna thank everyone who was a part of ensuring that administration of the exam. The second matter I wanna speak to is linked to some of the items later in the business agenda related to chef negotiations. We are at the tail end or the year, the fifth year of the chef stipulation. The chairman and I both serve in closed-door negotiations related to what is right now a negotiation around a one-year extension to that stipulation agreement. And after the one-year extension, there will be continued negotiations if, that go beyond this year. There are a few items that, as of Friday, have become public items that have been released to this board to take action on, and though, but they will be continued conversations behind closed doors. Because these are closed-door negotiations, these are items that we are not able to share with the public ahead of time as much as there is a public interest in this. And I thank you for, for your understanding of that. We do have two items related, I'm sorry, three items related to this tonight regarding two approved magnets and some additional funding that the state has agreed to. And more information will be forthcoming from the board chairman and I as we proceed through these negotiations over the next four to six weeks. And that's, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Committee reports, and start with the Finance and Audit Committee. Mr. Waring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met last month, from Monday after the board meeting, just to figure when our meeting is. You'll see in the board packet this month at pages one through five, six, seven, five, one through five, there's quarterly financials.
Rich, Mr. Waring?
Yes.
Could I just interrupt you for a second? We have another item that we need to address.
I apologize. An important part of my report was the second quarter financials. If I can have Chris Johnson come up, who is going to share that on, in place of Paul Lauter, who had to deal with a family matter today. Thank you, Chris, for joining us.
Good evening, members of the board. Chairman Paul and Superintendent Kishimoto, student representative. My name is Christian Johnson. I'm the executive finance director. It's my pleasure tonight to give you a report of the seven months ending January the 31st for the Hartford Public School System. If I can just direct you to page three of your agenda, I'll provide you some of the highlights of the performance. Through the seven months ended January the 31st, we spent $115 million, which represents 41% of our $284 million budget. We have encumbrances on the books of $40 million, which represent 14% of our overall budget. And if you look at the far right-hand column, you'll see that currently at the bottom, a figure of $837,000, which represents the favorable surplus to budget at this point in time that we project. That's comprised of two pieces. A deficit of $1.3 million that relates to transportation and is driven by a Group II spending, SPD, Special Education, transportation issue that we have at this point in time. And also a favorable variance of $2.1 million, which relates to our fringe accounts at the bottom. You'll see that above the total number. If we wanna drill down on the fringe accounts, you'll see that on page four of your pamphlet. And it's, again, it's two pieces. There's a favorable revenue variance and a favorable expense variance, which is always a good combination. The favorable revenue variance is $281,000 and relates to higher-than-expected employee copays premiums and also higher state subsidies than originally budgeted. The $1.8 million expense, favorable expense variance is comprised also of two factors. One, that we see favorable claims through January the 31st of $1.4 million. And also, Hooker and Holcomb provided us a pension valuation that saw a half-million-dollar favorable variance in our contribution to the pension fund. So that's what comprises our $2.1 million favorable fringe variance that helps to offset our transportation issue. If I can direct you to page, I believe it's five in, in the book, that is our special fund summary. And if you look at the bottom, at the totals, you'll see that we have spent at this point in time $56.8 million of our $123.5 million budget, or 46%. We have encumbrances on the books of $8.5 million, which represent 7% of our overall budget, and we have available to spend still 47% of our budget. So overall, at this point in time, we are in good shape with a favorable variance. There are always unexpected issues that might come up related to health claims or utility usage or rate volatility, but at this point in time, we have a favorable variance and we continue to project that. So at this point, I'll open it up to any questions that might have.
Looking from there, we're gonna go to the Finance Committee report. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you very much. Mr. Waring?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met last month. We need the Monday after. We meet the Monday after the board meeting. So we were met, I don't remember the date of the board meeting, but we met the Monday after that. We discussed, outlined this report. There are a couple of points that I'd like to bring out beyond what Mr. Johnson reported on. The majority of the transportation issue is a Group II issue. There is some issue in the Group I of regular transportation numbers. Frankly, the expenditure numbers themselves are actually quite good, and they're very much in line historically with what we've been doing. I think there were some overly optimistic budgeting assumptions that were made on Group I. Dr. Slater and I met yesterday or the day before to discuss this. And the result is that although the overall expenditure number is quite good, it's creating a little bit of red ink in the transportation account because I think we were a little optimistic in what we thought we could do. That will not happen again, and I think our budget assumptions for next year in Group I will be more predicated on historical precedent rather than what we think we can do. With respect to fringe, I think it's worth noting that, I mean, the last several years, we've managed to extract some substantial savings out of the fringe accounts. And in fact, the positive variance that we ran last year was pretty much the function, a function of very aggressive management of fringe. In fact, frankly, the fact that we'll probably run another positive variance over a much smaller this year is the same thing. There is a limit to how much money we can squeeze out of the fringe account. And Ms. Altieri, you know, has, I think, and I share with her some concern, how many more years can we do this? And this is a sort of backhanded way of saying that I think the ability of this board to continue to function at $400 million total between special and general revenues, with general revenues about $280 million or so, and not see reductions in services is coming to a close. I think we can do it again for another year, but I mean, I think, you know, the ability to keep operating at $280 million, the same number or greater staff, is dependent on the ability to find savings. And frankly, fringe is the number-one place we found these savings, but with increasing labor costs every year, we need about $4 million just to keep pace with increases in labor costs. And, you know, I don't want to be the harbinger of doom, but I have to be frank that I think that we will not be able to go much more beyond this next fiscal year of $400 million without talking about some reductions in what we, you know, what we will be able to do. Because, you know, labor costs continue to increase, you know, supplies have to replenish, all the normal things, and there are only so many savings in the fringe account. And I, you know, I think we've done a good job of shaking that out, and there may be some more, but, you know, I think we have to have, you know, certainly at the committee level and even at the board level, and I also think at the city level, we have to start a much deeper and probably more unpleasant conversation about if these are the level of services we want to provide, what it's going to take financially to be able to do that. And, you know, that's not going to be a pleasant conversation, whether it's the city's own fiscal problems and the state's fiscal problems. But I, you know, I can only caution that, you know, I don't think next year I can come to the board at this time and say, "We did it with $400 million this year, and don't worry, next year we can do it with $400 again." I just, I don't see it, absent, you know, some wizardry from Ms. Altieri, which, you know, I mean, I think we've gotten a lot out of her in that respect so far, and I just see it coming to an end. And again, I don't need to be so dire in my portents, but, you know, I think it's, I think, you know, we have to start thinking about what we're going to do when $400 million isn't enough. And, you know, I think that that is coming more quickly than we would like, and frankly, we've been fortunate to survive at that level for as long as we have. And I think, you know, we need to start thinking about some different ways of configuring our business to, you know, to achieve, hopefully, comparable services for less money. And I don't know exactly what format we're taking. It's not something that I have a 13-point plan on because I don't, but I'm putting it out there because I think, at the end of the day, $400 million will be enough for one more year, and then it's not going to be enough thereafter. And I, you know, I'm now starting to ramble, so I'll stop the report there. We also, I think I reported this at the last meeting, but if I haven't, just to say, I don't say it again, we received a clean audit from our outside auditors, which is always a good piece of news. There were no exceptions to the audit, which is great. And, you know, that was more or less what we discussed at the last Finance Committee, so I'll leave off with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Waring. Mr. Cota, the Policy Committee?
The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, March 13th. In attendance were Mr. Foden, Ms. Brad Noel, Mr. Roldan, Dr. Nardone, Dr. Kishimoto, and Attorneys Kaufman and Cutler-Hodgman. We discussed several policies in terms of adding a new category that the state has now required us to add in the nondiscrimination policies and harassment policies. And that inclusion, which I'll talk a little bit more about, is to include gender identity and expression as one of the categories in which we cannot discriminate against, for students or staff. So there's six different policies that we had to make that adjustment. Dr. Kishimoto presented a series of new regulations regarding, or proposals for regulations for the student expulsion policy to create more flexibility regarding when we, when and how we return kids from expulsion. This was already in previous policy or existing policy. And we also discussed the legislative agenda. We had a pretty good debate, I would say, about what our legislative agenda ought to be. I'm happy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cota. The School Choice and Facilities Committee, Mrs. Noel?
Yes, the Choice and Facilities Committee met Tuesday, February 26th, and our agenda, excuse me, included the choice application and lottery update that Enid Braid presented to us, talking about, in some of the details, that there were 250, 2,500 paper applications, that there was a large increase in journalism and media applications, and that open choice was, that suburban families could now identify the specific Hartford school that they wanted to wish to attend. There were other details. But then, the other item on the agenda was planning for, quote, "weaver treasures" during construction. As I think most of you know, I have a warm place in my Hartford Weaver High School, and I know there are, it's got a long, long tradition and many, what we call treasures. And I was very pleased that Luke Williams attended our meeting, he said Hartford Public High School, and he recognized this need for treasures because he really has been a one-person savior for Hartford Public High School. If any of you ever go over there, be sure and ask to see the museum at Hartford Public High School that he still maintains. And I'm not sure that Weaver would have something of that extent, but I think it's very important that we plan now to have that. And as I said, the present librarian, Jean Cochran, was at the meeting as well, and she is already very much aware of the vast collection of yearbooks that are up in the library, the collection of The Lookout, which was the newspaper and journal and magazine for the school, that are copies of that in the library. In addition, some of the former music teachers came to see what was not being used because there has not been music programs going on at Weaver in the last few years. And what was told was like a $10,000 piano that needed a couple thousand dollars repair, and there it was, you know, locked in a classroom that it can't get out of, and apparently the doors were changed after that piano got into that room. And there's another piano in the main office, and a big storeroom of instrumental music. And so there's a lot of things that are, and treasures, and his, the sports panels and things of that sort. So we had a big, interesting discussion about that, and I, the management, the administration here, rather than over there looking quietly, has got this on his shoulders to really find places. We can't really sort of put them into classroom of existing schools. There's got to be a storage area that is a serious storage area to put these storages and things so that when Weaver is finally renovated, that they can come back to the school. So that was the thing we talked about, trying to appeal to teachers who are there at the school now to check their closets, to former students. And there's a great population of Weaver graduates in greater Hartford that we hope maybe we can get some press to encourage them to return what they might have at home that would be a source. So that was the topics of the, so if any of you have connections with Weaver High School and things at home that you say, "I don't really want this, but I think this is the history of Weaver, why let us know?" Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Noel. Are there any other committee reports?
Yes.
The Human Resources Committee met in March 18th to discuss the Accounts and Operations Audit for the Office of Telemanagement, sorry. The purpose of the audit was to test internal accounting and operation controls, the accuracy and property of transactions, the degree of compliance with established operating policy and procedures, and to recommend improvements where required. There were six areas that we discussed during our meeting. Hiring process, termination process, life insurance, the unit's security and access control, and other technology issues, image processing, and employee tuition reimbursement. The board is actually very pleased with the steps or the action steps taken by Ms. Allen to address all audit concerns. I think that she has done a wonderful job with her staff, not only to address the concerns that are in this audit report, but also to put forth really creative ways in which not only the Hartford schools can actually benefit, but also the entire city can benefit. So we're truly appreciative for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Having none, we'll move into the business agenda. There's a motion before us that the Hartford Board of Ed authorized the superintendent entering to a memorandum of understanding with the Hartford Foundation for public giving for the fiscal management disbursement of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation for the district charter collaboration grant.
We need the option of a resolution.
Any discussion? Pardon? We didn't have, we didn't have four on the floor.
Just give him this, the second one.
Right. Nobody did?
I moved it.
Okay.
I'll send it in.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
But why don't we just take another roll call? Vivian, please.
Mr. Foden?
Here.
Mary Capson? Please, I'm back. Oh, the top of the news?
Here.
Any others? Hi, yes.
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. So any discussion?
Yes. Excuse me.
Noel?
Yeah, I appreciate that we've got a lot of detail here on this, and this is not the first time we've heard about this, but I just do, wanted to just point out, discuss a couple of issues, I guess. The one, in terms of the residency program, which is an item that would say that would expect a leadership to changes, and that the lead would be Achievement First. I just vaguely remember that we saw some information in the past that this would be principal training, part-time, I mean, when I say part-time, part of the year, maybe, at Achievement First, but then that our training for our principals would also include training in Hartford Public Schools. And I just wanted to be sure that when we say this is the lead, it doesn't mean that this is the sole responsibility, that Achievement First would therefore fulfill all of that responsibility of training principals, because I think that they have, I mean, I've been there and very impressed with what they're doing, and I think that they have a lot to offer to train our principals. But on the other hand, I think our principals need to see schools and have to get some training in schools where there are a substantial number of special needs students and ELL students that are not present there at that school. So I just, is that, when it says lead, it doesn't mean sole responsibility.
No, not at all. They transitioned into Hartford Public School halfway through the school year, so they've spent, they're fully back in the fold, so.
That's what I thought I had read somewhere, but this word lead just, God gave me a little bit of, and I, again, I assume that down next to number three, that it says the lead is the Hartford Public Schools, but this is what they're talking about, common core, and I'm assuming that the Achievement First is addressing common core as well, isn't that, I mean, I think it sort of has to be.
Let, I'll clarify the language we're using with lead. Because this is a collaborative between three organizations, a lead is established as the primary organization who will take responsibility for coordinating the work. In that particular case, we are the lead, we're far along, and both Jomoki and Achievement First will come into the planning with us.
Okay. And I, you know, I just wanted to be sure, because again, again, we get down to number four, this is the quality education commissioner's network. Participation involves a partnership with an established charter school with Lead Jomoki. Again, that doesn't mean all of that initiative is between Jomoki and the schools and school districts. Is that correct?
All the work that you see is in partnership with the three partners, so no one partner really functions absent the other partner.
And that's what I had previous, but when, you can understand, when I read this lead, I want to be sure that I'm not voting for something that I'm, I'm not voting for, so I'm glad to hear that that's the case. Let me see if this, and we do have the, and then the MOI, MOU, is it here? So I read that as well. Okay. I think that that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Waring?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, probably to Mr. Roldan, I write through the item number one agenda, and I have a pretty clear understanding of point one, two, and three, but I'm still not, I'm still not sure that I understand the aspect on which Jomoki will be taking the lead and what exactly that will entail. It doesn't seem as, it's not to me as obvious as the others, so I'm hoping for some explanation as to exactly what that means.
So as we entered this agreement with our partners, we also had been entering into the planning process with the commissioner's network and started to explore ways in which we can look to our partners as potential supports for new school designs, turnaround, particularly related to turnaround designs, where we're all at the table looking at the needs of a school, bringing our expertise to the table. With Jomoki, the reference to Jomoki here is relative to building up their capacity to engage not only in new school models, as they have always done as a charter management organization, but as a CMO here in the city of Hartford, working in partnership with us to do a turnaround model with Lunar Elementary School being our first work that we're doing together, building up their capacity, and they would be a resource that we could turn to and would be an option for continued work around some turnaround approaches.
Thank you.
Mr. Cota?
First of all, thank you. I just want to say, we'll first ask a question to get it on the record. Number one, has the Hartford Board of Education actually voted to apply for this particular grant? I just want to hear from someone on the record. Superintendent Mr. Roldan?
We have not, they have not been asked to apply for the grant. There was information shared with the board concerning the application as we provide summary reports on grants that we submit to a variety of groups that align back with our strategic operating plan.
Okay, thank you.
What we typically do is have the board accept the funds.
So a few, probably a few months ago, because of this reason, and just to So, just to kind of put it out there and kind of give you guys some perspective, the Hartford Board of Ed does apply to federal and state grants, right? So, for instance, we applied to the Race to the Top Grant, didn't get it, but that's what we usually do. And the reason we do that is so the public, which is represented by this board, can vet, meaning review, the different applications that come through the board. So, this particular one, because of a loophole in our policy, was not applied for, okay? And now it's fit to us for acceptance after it's been applied for, signed, sealed, delivered in front of us. Okay? So, I just want to put that out there. So, a few months ago, I, through the Policy Committee, I did submit a proposal for this board to also have to approve private grants, right? And the reason is, is because what I see happening here is that we have this grant, which looks really fantastic on paper, right? Five million dollars, except when you really break it down, not all the five million is coming to Hartford, number one. Most of the money and most of the time that's being dedicated goes to the charters, which is fine. They're welcome to go and get grants if they'd like, but I'm worried about the Hartford schools, okay? Not necessarily like, you know, Charter Inc. or whatever it might be. So, that's another thing. And there's commitments that have been made in this grant application in which we have to fulfill, in which we have to change policies. For instance, if you look at the budget, we have to give a quick more tests, okay? We have to loan out some of our principals, and they're going to... We're basically subsidizing some principals to go over to Jamoki and Achievement First and help them out. We could use the help. They're going to go help them out for half a year, right? And so, we've made all these sorts of commitments, and the other commitment would be that we're going to do more turnarounds, which was really fascinating that I heard a couple of weeks ago, the CEO of Jamoki went to the legislature and said, "Yeah, we're going to be doing some more turnaround work. We're going to be getting some more money to help our bottom line from the Hartford schools." That was news to me. But apparently, there's been commitments that have been made out there. So, all that said to say that this isn't really collaboration. What I see is, this is a coup, right? This is Bill Gates coming in and saying, "Here's five million dollars, mostly for the charter schools, not really for the Hartford schools, and you've got to change up your policies, and you've got to give the kids more tests, right? And you've got to make nice and give some... Kind of make some arrangements with the charter schools Jamoki, which haven't even been signed by us yet, but they're already, you know, going around the legislature saying this stuff's happening." So, I'm deeply troubled by the way that this has happened. And at the end of the day, we have to really think about, is this really going to help the Hartford Public Schools and the kids in the Hartford Public Schools, right? If we're talking about performance, right, there's two ways of thinking about it. The first one is that we have these fancy magnet schools, right, that not only do they bring kids together from different racial, ethnic groups, right, but for the most part, they're doing fairly well on pretty much all measures, graduation, test scores, those are our high-performance schools, right? Jamoki and Achievement First, they're doing well, that's fine, good for them. They're not part of this right now, right? The other thing, the other way you could think about it is that the high-performing schools are the ones that serve the neediest kids, right? That's this school, America's Choice of Sands, the ones that have all the ELL kids, the ones that have all the special ed kids, the ones that have all the kids that are behavior problems, right? Those kids aren't in the magnets, and they're not in the charter either, right? Maybe those are the high-performing schools, because they're doing the heavy lifting, right? And if we want our principals to learn how to really help those kids, why would we put them in the charter schools that don't have ELL kids, that don't have special ed kids, that don't have the behavior issues that the schools like America's Choice and Sands, you know, have? So, I guess this just, to me, it really seems like much ado about nothing in the end, but we now, we're going to take this money, change up everything, right, without having really vetted it. And that's not good for transparency. And I know, you know, the mayor's on the committee with us, and I know he wants to be transparent as well, and I wish he was here, because he needs to, you know, kind of play a role in this and making sure this is transparent, because that's what we all hope to achieve. So, that's my spiel. I'll get off my soapbox, and then we'll take a vote. So, thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Dr. Chris Miller?
I just want to respond to some of the information and clarify from my perspective, the grant application. The grant application does not require additional testing of any student. We actually requested of the Gates Foundation whether we can use the funds we were receiving to pay for something that had already been approved by this board, which is an NWA MAP assessment, which our teachers are fully engaged in, trained in, and have been giving us feedback about the value of that data to make day-to-day decisions with their students. You know, part of the Policy Committee discussion has included a discussion around charging the superintendent, the CEO of this district, with going after competitive grants in a way that aligns with the Strategic Operating Plan and holding me accountable to making sure it is aligned with the Strategic Operating Plan. And this board receives reports from me related to some of that funding. We recently received a report on another grant that I have applied for. Those are grants that are privately funded, are educationally related, they cannot be shared in the public necessarily, but you received some of that advance notice from me... Excuse me, from me, about that alignment with the SOP. And I think that just in terms of how private funding occurs, we need to... That's why there is a distinction in the policy between public and private funding. The other piece is, you know, the approach I've taken in leading this organization is to ensure that we are not siloed in our decision-making. Oftentimes, in pre-K-12 education, we make decisions as individual districts, as if we shouldn't care about the next district over, that it really is just about us. I have worked very hard, I think you know that, around nationalizing some of our work, getting that connection with some of the work that's happening in other states, being a model in this district. This board has done a tremendous amount of work around reform policies and being a lead in this district around this. This is what's giving us access to some of these competitive grants, and I'd like to be able to continue to go after some of these grants and really go beyond... They're not operating dollar grants, and we know we have a challenge with that, as Mr. Waring shared earlier, but this gives us dollars to do some of the innovation work and to network with others to build our... Build upon our intellectual capacity and to share with others in terms of their work to go after... To ensure that we can fully implement our reform plan.
Thank you. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two weak points and then maybe one larger point. The first is, and I would not suggest that my friend, Mr. Cotto, said this, but I think it's somewhat unclear after these spoke. There is nothing in this memorandum of understanding, as I read it, that commits us to do another turnaround school, that commits us to do anything with Jamoki or Achievement First beyond the things we already do. And no one should walk out of this room with the impression that somehow by agreeing this memorandum of understanding, we have committed to do something other than the things we've already committed to do, which have separate agreements. The second is, is that Achievement First is a charter school organization, and they do do work in Hartford. They run a... Their charter school in Hartford is a neighborhood school. It takes kids from that neighborhood, you know, and I think that needs to be kept in mind when we talk about the differences between, you know, charter and non-charter performance. But the thing that I wanted to concentrate the most on, and I think really needs to... I have to say that I am confused, because on the one hand, I am told that what we are about to do amounts to a coup, and then later told that it's much ado about nothing. And so, is it a coup or is it much ado about nothing? And I take exception to the notion that it's a coup, because there is no coup. A coup is something that's illegitimate, usually by force overthrowing something lawfully established. If we vote no, this does not happen. Whatever commitments people think they have don't exist. Whatever Dr. Sharp has said at the General Assembly means nothing. Whatever Dr. Kishimoto has planned or thought she wanted to do, it comes to naught if we vote no. This is not simply some formal thing that we have no choice to do, and if Mr. Cotto is troubled by it, as he says he is, and I take him at his word, he's an honorable man, then he should vote no, because if he prevails, this will not occur. So, I think, you know, when we act as if somehow this is all a fait accompli, if Mr. Cotto hadn't been here when the vote was taken, there would be four people here, there would be no vote, because there would be no quorum. This could not be acted upon, and it would not happen, at least not tonight. So, you know, I think, to speak in somewhat reduced language, that somehow that this is all decided and it's all done, and there's nothing that can be done, and... Well, I mean, if Mr. Cotto and I vote no, or one other person votes no, this doesn't happen, so it's not a coup. And I think it doesn't really advance the debate to speak of something in that fashion, because you really... It's not on point, it's not accurate, and it really adds nothing to what could be a very substantive debate. And I'll confine my comments to that, but I think that last point needed to be made. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Noel?
Our agreement about the charter schools, I remember saying, I can't remember the date, but remember saying, "This agreement, I'm not even going to be here by the time this agreement runs out." And I've asked for a copy of that, please, so that... Because I don't know where my copy is. And it isn't to say, it's... I'm not at all saying I don't agree with the partnership. I've been to Achievement First and Jamoki and Milner, and, you know, I'm... I see a population that is maybe not as diverse, they don't have some of the... Some of the problem children are leftover Martin Luther King. That's very part of the problem that Martin Luther King may be having a difficulty, because a lot of the... That neighborhood child that is doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing and learning and so on and so forth is over at Achievement First. And that maybe says we need to beef up what we're doing at other schools, is... Are we giving enough resources? I don't feel that we have to vote no, and I'm not going to sit here and vote no today, but I do say, I read this, the future is a foundation, and I'm not sure whether this came from Melinda Gates or not, it says, "Jamoki, one of the things that passed... One of the goals of this is develop Jamoki Academy's capacity to successfully manage and implement and the transformation of low-performing schools in Hartford." Not one school in Hartford, schools in Hartford. And I would assume that by voting for this, I am not giving carte blanche to a future school. I... That's... And so, therefore, if in fact they decide they would like to do another school, or there are discussions that they're going to take over, it would come to the board for a vote. And at that time, if I was not comfortable with it, I would have an opportunity to vote no. But I don't feel that I have to vote no at this point, even though I say, "Wait a minute, I'm not sure I want to have that happen." I don't know. I'm not saying I don't, but I'm not voting to do that. Thank you.
So, I just want to clarify that that's correct. Everything that happens moving forward, other than what has been adopted by the board, needs board action. That doesn't change it. Thank you.
Any comments, Mr. Chairman?
Just in terms of the comments, when I... Just to clarify, when I say this is much ado about nothing, I mean, we have a very small amount of money that we're celebrating, and it was in the newspapers, and people were saying, "Wow, Hartford got five million dollars." And so, when I say it's much ado about nothing, I suppose what I'm saying is that it's really a very small amount of money that we're celebrating. Over the course of three years, it's like, for Hartford, maybe two and a half million at the most, that really a value that we're getting. The budget for the school system is roughly four hundred million every year, right? So, it's a very small amount of money. So, I guess that's what I'm saying. When I say with coup, what I mean is that we have Bill Gates, who's presumed, you know, one of the richest people in the world, and, you know, garbage off computers, maybe they're good, maybe they're not, that's your opinion, but he made this money, and he's created a foundation, and he's designed things called the Common Core. His money has helped design the Common Core state standards. He's designed a number of other things. He's actually pushed charter schools to his foundation as well. So, he's pushed all of these things, and now, what, by taking this small amount of money, which we really shouldn't be celebrating, it's really not all that much, we're changing a number of things in our policies that we really weren't doing before. There's a couple of other things kind of buried in there in terms of what's called like standards-based report cards, some more stuff with NWA MAPs that they're doing with teacher evaluation. So, there's some other things that we weren't doing before, and now we're kind of like said, "No, we'll do this for a small amount of money, for one million dollars." So, Bill Gates can come in with one million dollars, right, and change up a whole bunch of stuff, right, in kind of a smoke-filled room, but maybe that's been some exaggeration, but... So, 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 Bill Gates can come in with his one million dollars, but the City of Hartford with its hundred million dollars, and the State of Connecticut with its three hundred million dollars, in my opinion, seems to be having less say over what's going to happen in the school system than Bill Gates. So, I think that's where I'm coming from with that. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. And then the last point I wanted to clarify was, I want... Thanks to Brad Noel for pointing out the point about Jamoki turning around more schools, which I don't know how that's really working out, but this is a quote from the CEO of Jamoki in response to Representative Fleischman at the legislature, and about partnerships with the Hartford Public Schools. He says, "Right..." That... This is from the transcript from the Connecticut General Assembly. "That would be one aspect of it. We're actually extending it a little bit further, the partnership, in that Jamoki Academy is committed to working with the City of Hartford and possibly taking over schools like Milner School in a fee structure that allows us to help the city, and the city also helps us... Helps our bottom line."
Yeah. Just a follow-up question regarding the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. I'm thrilled and glad that they're going to be serving as the fiscal agent, right? We know them well, and we're glad that they're together in this process. My question is, as any of the technical foundation, there are processes and procedures by which they release their monies, and usually it's a matter of filling in reports. What I see here is, the description, is a page that shows five different payments. So, those payments are going to release based on what type of information? Are we building the reports by which the... By which Hartford Foundation is going to be releasing the money to the Hartford Public Schools? Are we using the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving reports, releasing reports for them in order to release the money? I mean, how is that going to work?
So, this is two points. The Hartford Foundation here is serving as fiscal agent, which means that they're managing the funds, and they're managing the disbursement of those funds to the individual partners, in this case being Hartford Public Schools, Achievement First, and Jamoki Academy. That does not by any means take the place of Hartford Public Schools providing the necessary reports that we are obligated to provide detailed now, the progress of the work and the type of work that we're doing. So, Hartford Foundation for Public Giving will be giving financial reports, where Hartford Public Schools will be working in conjunction with them on the programmatic aspect of the work and the reporting.
So, we will be sending reports on progress to the Hartford Foundation?
We will be working with Gates Foundation on that. They provide a format...
Okay. Because that's not clear here, though. I mean, I think we need to spell that out here. In terms of, you know, who are we reporting? Are we reporting for the release of the monies to the Gates Foundation then? The monies coming to the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving?
Yes. We are required...
Who are we reporting?
We are required to provide a report, a series of reports, but one formal report to the Gates Foundation once a year, and the money gets issued in November. We then can set up a payment schedule with Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, who serves only as a fiscal agent here, without programmatic oversight. So, it's directly to the Gates Foundation, and the money's provided to Hartford Foundation.
Just answered the question, so no programmatic oversight at all?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Good question.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Let me just say that a couple of things here. I have this sense of no good deed goes unpunished when I listen to these arguments. There is a policy, whether we call it a loophole or not, that doesn't require this board to approve private grants.
Application.
Right. Application to the private grants. Just there's no policy. If we want a policy, we should get a policy, but we don't have one. And I think the nature of the Gates process was played out in full sunshine. And I think the nature of the Gates process was played out in full sunshine. This district worked diligently on this grant application. And $5 million may not seem like a lot of money, but it's a lot of money for what it's being invested in. And it's the opportunity that a district like Hartford, among all the districts in the United States and the places where the Gates Foundation funds, gets selected. And we cannot underestimate that power, and that's an important thing. We can all have differences of opinion about whether or not Bill Gates is engineering education. We accuse the broads of engineering education. We accuse everybody who invests in education and who's rich as engineering education. But the fact of the matter is, is this district worked hard, this is a valuable opportunity for us, and the notion that there's something nefarious about it or coups related to it happening or done in the darkness, you know, there's just no evidence of that. And to support it completely, is what Mr. Waring said, if we don't approve it, it doesn't happen. So it's, this isn't about the application unless we change the policy. This opportunity here, I think, in our city, with the kind of community deficits that we've got, we need all the help we can get, and the district works hard to find those. We need this kind of infusion and investment in our district in order for us to achieve the long-term goal of a quality education for every student in the city. I would rather argue here at the board about how do we get the schools that aren't performing to perform better than to get sunk in arguments around whether the Gates Foundation is the right thing to do or not. And I look forward to those conversations. I think we should have them here. So if there aren't any other...
I just wanted to read a couple of sentences that we had here to reinforce what you're saying. That there were seven Gates awards and Hartford is the smallest district receiving the largest financial award. And I think this recognizes, and I have no concern that what we're voting on, I raised some questions, but I know the parameters of what we're voting on tonight, and I have no problem voting for that. And recognize that if there's some extensions of the, of what may, Jamoki may want to do, it's going to come to a vote for the board and another vote. So I feel very comfortable with what I'm voting on today, and it's not one of those agreements that'll last until before I'm around still.
All right. All in favor of the motion before us?
Aye.
Opposed?
May.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. The next, the next item is, the Hartford Board of Ed accepts the incubation grant award of $600,000 from the State Department of Education to secure a new location for the Tansas STEM for the 2013-2014 school year.
Move the adoption resolution.
And a second? Second?
So, but, excuse me, board members, by way of background, we have already, as a district, received $300,000 this year for incubation funds for STEM, which is a prior action item. The State Department of Education is going to be releasing an additional $600,000 to support us in the implementation of a model and design that you adopted and approved a year ago. We have the fourth grade class right now at the Tansas Elementary. We had assured the state that we would look for a permanent site or a lease site for fourth through eighth grade beginning in 2013-14 school year. And these funds are meant to assist us in paying for the initial lease and build out of that location prior to the school year. This is, we have asked for these advanced dollars because as you are aware through other board action that you've taken, sometimes we get the monies after we've had to do the work and it's a difficulty in terms of your planning process, in terms of the budget. These are advanced dollars that we're getting. It makes much more sense in terms of planning.
Any questions or comments? Number two.
Item two. Item two is a policy. It's six, no.
Item two is the magnet incubation funds. All right, any comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number three is that the Hartford Board of Ed approve the development of the Montessori Magnet School at Moylan and the Hartford Pre-K Magnet School as new chef magnets to open in the 2013-2014 school year.
Move the adoption of the resolution.
I want to give you some, I prepared myself for the packet I received at home of the Board of Education's agenda. And now I'm finding out it's a long agenda.
You have a draft?
Well, that's what I received at home. And it must have changed?
A draft was sent, I'm sorry.
I guess there needs to be something clear that something got changed, I mean, that, okay, that, I'm feeling embarrassed, but, well, I prepared myself well and obviously I haven't, we're talking about the...
So the item before you, as I mentioned earlier in my comments, are related to what has been released as part of the negotiations that the chairman and I have seen a part of with the plaintiffs and the State Department of Education. There was a list of potential schools that we were going to be discussing in closed-door negotiation, you're aware of that. Those are still items that cannot be discussed. These are two items that have been released. There are funds that will be released related to this that will come as a separate item at the close of the legislative session that have been approved through the negotiations and through the process and that will support the operating, the dollars that come with magnet seats as well as facility-related funds, just as the prior item that will support these two agenda items. And right now, what you have before you is the approval of moving forward with all of the planning related to opening up these two magnet schools in August 2013 and all the planning as well as the marketing that will begin immediately of these new school seats that will be, that will be released publicly.
I see all, I hope all those parents that were here earlier speaking are going to, still, some of them are still here, that they will hear us voting. But I also have a, in my files, I guess I found it, because this is an October 30th, 2012 memo, talking about plans for future chef schools. And it mentions the Tansas Early Reading Lab, which we, I think, have already...
That was approved the year of, I guess, fine.
And it also mentions the Montessori in Moylan, but it also mentions the Journalism and Media Academy.
I think we have to be careful about what we're sharing. This is still closed-door negotiations, and so what we have before us is the only thing that has been released.
I wasn't even closed-door, and I'm just reading the memo that I received.
So that was, you know, it's important for me to keep the board up to date without violating those negotiations. Mr. Poland and I, the chairman and I, are assigned to those negotiations so that he represents the board and I represent the administration and the city as appointed by the mayor of the city in those negotiations.
And I have not been part of that, so I'm not speaking yet out, you know, that I'm revealing something that I heard at a meeting. But I did hear parents today say, goodness, you know, we really want to know sooner than later about these changes in schools, whether they either want to get out of a magnet school or they want to get into a magnet school. So, and I know that there are, as I mentioned earlier, there are a lot, a lot of applications for that program, both from Hartford and from the suburban schools. So I will just make that comment and not ask anybody else to respond.
I will just clarify that for the Moylan-Montessori, under John Freeman's leadership in developing the first Montessori school, excuse me, the intention was to replicate that model. We had had discussions and parents have been part of discussions about ultimately looking at a magnet design for the Moylan-Montessori. We were not sure whether that would be in the immediate or in sometime in the future. And so this has provided an opportunity. So that has been discussed. The pre-K center is a completely new magnet design. And so there are no parents currently affected by the pre-K new magnet center.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
I have a question. I'm actually, I'm thrilled to see this coming to Hartford, so this is actually really good. I have a question regarding the Hartford Pre-K Magnet School. It says here that we're going to start with four classrooms and that enrollment will be 180 seats.
It's actually eight classrooms. It should be eight, yes.
But even if it's eight, then you have 160, not 180, because you are not going to go ratios over 20 by state regulations. So what is the number and how many classrooms?
Well, we were planning on eight classrooms for 176 students.
And so you're going to go over your 20 students per pre-K? I mean, I don't think that that's the way to go.
We are, we, allowed us of some flexibility to look at potential special education-related programming for pre-K students, which would allow us to potentially add a classroom. So there's the eight classrooms and there's the funding for that number of students, but it allows us to work with even more classrooms if necessary.
So you have funding for 160 students?
No, we are funding through this for 180 seats.
You have funding for a total of 180?
Yes.
And?
And the configuration we use will depend on whether we integrate some special education programming as well as the, in addition to or as part of those eight classrooms. We can go over those eight classrooms to accommodate the number of seats. What's important here is the number of funded seats that we have to work with.
To me, what's important is, is continuing with quality and ratio.
Absolutely.
And best practices. And nationwide, we're actually saying that, you know, the earlier the education, the better, but also the smaller the group, the better. So we don't want to place 18, 20, 22 children in one classroom, just to comply with, you know, what we have here. I think we need to look at ratios. And in this case, you know, it will be nice to have ratios lower than 20. So that might change your amount of classrooms that...
It may. And what I'm saying is that the driving piece here is 180 seats that are funded. How we organize this now through an operations plan will detail our number of kids per classroom. We're not looking to over-enroll or oversubscribe the classroom, especially in the early grades, but it does give us the funding for that number of seats.
Okay. So hopefully the seat classrooms work.
We kept up our pre-K classes. And so that doesn't change that.
I'm going to advocate for that too, because that's extremely important for us to make sure that we continue with those, and, you know, we move forward with that. So just to make sure that, especially if we're going to have special education in that, with the classrooms, the ratio isn't different than...
With the state and the magnet world, you always want to ask for more than, for funding, for more than you may actually end up with. What you don't want to do is ask for less and then later go and say, but we need more. So that's how we declare things.
So can we receive a correction on the, if this is just...
Well, we'll have the 180 seats is what's funded, the, it should be eight classes. We can correct that. Eight classes is what we're going to be telling them.
Well, it's just, I mean, this information that's going out to the public?
Yep, we can correct that.
The operations plan is actually the document that will detail the specifics of how the program will be...
But we'll correct this public document. Absolutely.
Very good. And with that, you also consider teacher ratio as well? And you'll continue with basically...
We will, and it won't show up here, it'll show up in the operations plan, which will come before this board.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Coto?
So first of all, I want to thank the parents of the Montessori children that have come and spoken, came at the last meeting too, and I remember that, and I hope this really supports your school and really kind of brings it along. It's a very, it's kind of quietly been a program that I think people really liked. They had a neighbor who, they sent their child to the Montessori school in Moylan, really, they really thought it was awesome in that the kids got a real holistic education, but they're looking at the social aspects of education, creativity, the academic side, the skills, just really fantastic program. Agreed. In terms of the Hartford Pre-K magnet, there's just been a lot of questions, particularly at the state level, about funding of pre-K and how that works out. It's been, the districts that send kids are starting to be more and more uncomfortable with sending their kids and paying tuition for them to go to these pre-K programs in our district. I think it's fantastic, but I think we should keep an eye on that to understand what are their concerns and how, this is a state issue. The state needs to work this out and make sure that, that chef works, because if you recall, it's chef versus O'Neill, right? It's versus, the case is against the state. And I think it's up to them to really fund these, fund these things and kind of take the ownership of them. We'll cooperate, but I think that this is, this is the state's thing. But like I said, we will cooperate. I just wanted to also plug Dr. Jose Colom Rivas, and I know that, I think he really needs to be involved in this, given that he has such expertise in this particular area. And I just want to make sure that he's kind of in the loop, given his perspective and his knowledge about early childhood. So, thank you, I support this.
I just want to, Carolyn Potoff just came into my view. I'm going to thank her for leading this work. She worked with John Freeman at the Annie Fisher Montessori and then has led the development of the program at Moylan along with the team that's here tonight as well, and Jose Colom, who's the principal of Moylan and has been supporting the work in terms of the development of EL and the Montessori program at Moylan. So thank you for your leadership.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All the motion passes. Congratulations. The next item is the first reading of the Hartford Public Schools policies from the Policy Committee. Mr. Coto referenced this before, it's a first reading about revising the policies and sections, various sections of the policies on nondiscrimination. Mr. Coto?
So these are policies, these are a series of policies that we had to revise. Most of them have to do with kind of civil rights law policies, so pernibaction, harassment, nondiscrimination for students and for adults. And because of the change in state law, we had to include the term gender identity expression into, into the categories that are basically kind of defined...
into, uh, into the, um, the categories that are basically, uh, kind of defined and, and protected, I guess this is maybe the right word. This is just a first reading, and we put them all together because they, they kind of all had the same language in terms of protecting, uh, the civil rights of particular groups of students and adults. If I've forgotten anything, Melinda, that, that you got to make it, am I good? All right, so this is the first reading, so, you know, we're not going to make any particular motion on it tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Coto? Thank you, Mr. Coto. Um, the, uh, number five is the second reading and adoption of the proposed school calendar for 1415.
Move the adoption of the calendar.
Second? Any questions?
I, I, I had some concerns about the calendar, basically, um, in terms of any communication with our neighboring towns. We have heard that we are spending a lot of money on busing, and, um, if in fact our neighboring towns have February vacation during...